God make it make funny noises.
They win.
Yep.
It is six thirty and I call the October four, twenty twenty-two regular session meeting of the Franklin County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Before we get to the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss the meeting format.
Tonight's meeting will be conducted through a hybrid in-person, online meeting platform. This is going to take some getting used to. Should an individual planning commissioner become unexpectedly, actually, we don't have anybody connecting via phone or internet. So if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and skip down. This first paragraph is all about what happens if we lose a commissioner that's remotely commuted. If you wish to provide comments or need clarification on a public hearing item, please send us an email at planninginquiry, all one word, at FranklinCountyWA, all one word, dot gov. So planninginquiry@franklincountywa.gov before the public comment period closes. Once public comment period has closed, on said item, comments will not be included as part of the discussion. To those in attendance, please remember to speak into the microphone when addressing staff or public comments and testimony, and that would be from the podium.
Will planning staff please call, roll, and announce whether or not we have a quorum?
Mike Crowley.
Here.
Mike Vincent.
Here.
Layden Low.
Here.
Melinda Didier. Peter Harpster.
Here.
Manny Gutierrez.
Here.
Stacy Neiften.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Will staff in attendance please introduce yourselves?
Derek Broughton, Director of Planning and Building for Franklin County.
Ryan Nelson, Planner One.
Aaron Gunderson, Planner One.
I will now lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Low. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Low. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting. Good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host who will go over the ground rules for tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Chair. Here are the ground rules for tonight's hybrid hearing. In-person public testimony will be divided in two groups, for and against, for and against slash neutral. They will be called upon to speak during their allotted in-person public testimony section, giving their name for the audio record and position on the proposal. Call-in public testimony will be called upon individually during the call-in public testimony portion of the hearing, giving their name for the audio record, as well as if they are in favor, neutral, or against the proposal. For those seeking to call in or in the queue, please mute your audio when not speaking. Emailed comments received during the public hearing will be read into the record by staff after the call-in public testimony section of the hearing. All comments and questions shall be addressed to the planning commission and should be relevant to the application and not of a personal nature. Each speaker shall have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers who are part of a group or organization, please select a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behavior such as clapping, booing, hissing, or remarks is prohibited. Every citizen here tonight should have the opportunity to testify without such distractions.
Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules? Turning for a moment to our commissioners, commission members, please let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on this subject, matters of which these hearings accept in these hearings. We also may not participate in a decision in which there is an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matters which are before us for hearing today. Whether we had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interests in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with proponents or opponents of the matter, or whether we have any business associates or immediate family who may either be benefited or harmed by a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any items of the agenda? I know Case Vandermeulen. He's a friend, and I do business with him, and I will not be recusing myself unless someone requests it.
I will say I know Case Vandermeulen too, but I don't think we've ever done business together, and I will not recuse myself.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, let the record show that there were two declarations, no reclusions. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? There were no objections. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a staff report. The commission may ask questions of the staff. The applicant or applicant's representatives' presentation, in-person public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project, call-in public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project, email public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project to be read into the record by staff. Final staff comments, clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing, close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the public hearing? Seeing none. Item one is a public hearing for file CUP twenty twenty-two dash seven, SEPA twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Proposal is a major amendment to the previously approved conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty-two dash four, SEPA twenty twenty dash eleven. Reason for amendment and new CUP is the changing of project location. Features of the proposal are similar to what was originally approved in CUP twenty twenty-four, SEPA twenty twenty dash eleven, consisting of corrals with feed bunks, fences, and concrete slabs within an area consisting of approximately fifty-three acres. I declare the public hearing for CUP twenty twenty-two dash seven, SEPA twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three to be open at six thirty-nine. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, as mentioned, this is an amendment to a pre-approved conditional use permit. In twenty twenty, there was an application by Mr. Vandermeulen to basically get a conditional use permit for the sighting of a feedlot which would accommodate up to ten thousand head of cattle over time. As I've often said in this room and in the commissioners' chambers when before them, a conditional use permit is not necessarily, it's about getting permission. So, but there's still often work or things may look a little different. Well, in the process of establishing the feedlot that he was approved, Mr. Vandermeulen determined that there is a better location on his property for that, approximately a quarter mile to the east. And I'll show some of that here in a second. So, the address is two-two-seven-oh Joyce Road, parcel number, and it's, the thing is, they're the feedlot. The new location does straddle two lots, one oh-nine-two-two-oh-oh-two-two and one oh-nine-two-two-oh-oh-one-three. As stated in the summary, it's a fifty-three acre chunk of land, so it's, it's all under single ownership. Agricultural production twenty, AP twenty. Comp plan designation is agriculture, and the entire property is approximately four-hundred-and-eighty-point-five-eight acres. Location is south of US Highway three ninety-five, north of Joyce Road, and north of Cordish Road. As mentioned, it's a major amendment, and that's because they are seeking to move this location and actually expand the footprint. So the footprint of the site, but the headcount's maintaining, being maintained as originally proposed. Approximately fifty-three acres, and they provided a site plan that included the area in which the proposal will be located, photos depicting fencing type, feed bunks, concrete slab features, and existing feedlot. There's an existing home and an existing wellhouse, and all that's in your packet. So, and we'll have another one that, this is roughly where the original CUP was, CUP twenty twenty-oh-four. It was rather close to that. Now, it's more over in this area. That's just another shot of that. Now, this is a little hard to see because of the background, and, and when it comes to the specific operational or things like that, I'm going to defer any of those types of questions to Mr. Vandermeulen. I'm not a cattle guy, so some of these things, I know what they are, some of them I don't. But it's different paddocks and just, it's a feedlot. There's, there's not a lot that goes into a feedlot. It's fencing and feeding troughs usually. This is of the property itself as provided through the assessor's office, but this is not the area where the feedlots to be located. This, what we're looking at, oh, it's not even on this map. It's about three miles to, it's right off of, what's that road? What's that?
Joyce Road.
No, the main one coming off of three ninety-five, Pe- Pe- Pepeat. Yeah. These, those pictures are more of the stuff more around in that Pepeat area. This is way on the backside and looks kind of more like this. So, so on or about August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, staff sent notices, technical agencies, property owners within one mile, the Franklin County Graphics notifying them that, you know, this, this proposal was being brought to the planning commission and that this amendment was being sought. We also posted pending land use action sign on the property and entered the SEPA checklist and determination of nonsignificance into the SEPA registry as number two oh-two-two oh-four-two-six-nine. No public comments were received during the comment period. So, we did receive agency comments, as is, as is normal. Franklin County Public Works, an approach permit is required if they're accessing county roads. I don't believe this facility will really access a county road. It's all private drive internal to the property. And then any utility extensions crossing Franklin County roads will be addressed at the time of application. So that's basically, because you never know exactly what that's going to look like until you see the actual development and the needs or the specific alignments. We, we will do that when they try to build something on that that requires utilities. The Confederate Tribes, the Yakima Nation, state that the project is located within a high probability area for encountering archaeological resources, and they recommend an archaeological survey prior to any ground disturbing activities. DAHP concurred with that, and Bureau of Rec was, their comments were more aligned with their infrastructure proximity to it. As mentioned, it's a major amendment of a previously approved feedlot. So, because of that, it's required to go through what we call the full-blown CUP process. You've got to do the hearings and do everything. It's pretty much the same process as a new conditional use permit. So, like, the proposed feedlot is now approximately a quarter mile to the east, and there's no overlap of the site area between the original and new proposals. And it's a better site due to, you know, according to the applicant, due to higher elevation, associated slopes provide the ability to drain runoff to a storage facility or lagoon. Instead of having to pump it before they were going kind of up, this just lets gravity do its thing. As mentioned, count will stay the same, and will be located now outside. The old one was, actually did have some encroachment within a potential hundred-year flood plane, so this is a better location on that regard as well. If there were a catastrophic flooding event or something like that, it's most likely that this area would remain out of it, whereas before, it could have, you know, been included and grabbed some of that, the stuff that's out there, and moved it wherever the floodwaters went. So, staff's determined the change was significant in terms of site location, increased footprint proposed for the new location. It does not change the originally approved headcount, and it's in a better location. So, you know, based on our review of the codes, policies, and, and regulations, it, it is, it's in accordance with the goals policies of the county development regulations in the applicable comp plan. It's out in the middle of an ag area. It's, there ain't much out there. It's almost all rangeland or just, just open space. It's, and we're an agricultural community, so it makes sense to, if we find a better place to put something, I think we should put it there. If we find a better place to put something, I think we should put it there. Proposal will not adversely affect public infrastructure. Will be constructed, maintained, and operated to be in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. It's a few miles away from their existing dairy farm. And again, it's already been approved as far as its existence. It's just a matter of its location. And this is, it will not discourage the development of permitted uses on property in the general vicinity or impair the value because, again, it's all ag land or rangeland out there. Operation in... Whoops. Operation in connection with the proposal will not be more objectionable to nearby properties. Again, as earlier stated, it's added on to an existing dairy operation or contingent, contiguous to it, and it's already been approved for the sighting of the animals. And it will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare if located where proposed. Again, this is actually a better location because it removes it from the flood plains. So, in addition to our standard conditional use permit language, they will be required to obtain a letter from the Franklin basically approval to deviate from the dairy separation buffer. They'll need to maintain continued compliance with Washington State Department of Agriculture's requirements for dairy nutrient management plans, including updating requirements of the existing and approved plan. Comply with Washington State Department of Ecology's applicable permit requirements, including air and quality standards, air and water quality standards. Establish and comply with odor and fly control plan consistent with Franklin County Resolution 2001-238. And that will be approved by the Franklin Conservation District. All of what you just heard, those are requirements for pretty much any dairy or cattle facility that exceeds 1,000 heads. So, and due to the fact that this is in an area of... It's not quote "develop," but there's been a lot of activity there. And then, primarily, this work is all surface. We're requiring, recommending that they... It's an inadvertent discovery protocol with regard to the archaeological aspects as opposed to a full survey. So, if they're out there and they find something, then they'll need to stop operations and follow those proper protocols. But otherwise, we're not required, we're not recommending that they be required to do a full-blown archaeological study. Drainage systems shall be designed to capture and dispose of stormwater runoff onsite. And new facilities such as barns, pens, areas, and pilot expansion will need to be established as the headcount numbers increase over time, but capped at 10,000 head as approved in the original conditional use permit. The applicant is required to comply with the requirements of County Building Division regarding any new construction on the site. Onsite water for fire protection may be required upon completion of building department review of submittals in consultation with the local fire district in accordance with the International Fire Code. And then, they'll have to comply with the requirements of Public Works. In the staff report, it incorrectly states that there are 11 conditions due to there being two conditions numbered seven in the suggested conditions section. And that makes more sense with this line where it says there's 12. In your staff report, it says 11. I think they suggest or recommended... The recommendation was six findings of fact and 11 conditions. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that, that it's actually 12. And I am more than happy to answer any questions.
Does any commissioner have any questions of staff? Seeing none, does the applicant or applicant's representative wish to speak?
I need to go closer. There you go. I'll hold it. It's okay. There we go.
And you've got to state your name and address.
I am Case Vandermeulen. My address is of residence 2760 Pepiott Road, and I own this facility and a bunch of ground and the dairy that goes with it. Yeah, I'd like to comment on it, meaning even though when I did the last CUP on that other location, I already did own this part of this, but not all of it. And then, I purchased a piece next to it, and the spring, the light went on and said, "Why am I building it there?" Not there. So, it's much better, better slope, more space. It just works way better, and it's more adjacent to my existing feedlot already. So, it makes more sense. And I guess I would invite anybody to have questions I can potentially ask them, answer them.
No questions? I think questions come later anyway. Okay. Is there any in-person public testimony for the project? Is there any against or neutral? Okay. Is there any call-in public testimony? None at all? Any email testimony? None. Does staff have any final comments?
No.
No. Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? No. The public testimony portion of public hearing for CUP 2022-7, SEPA 2022-23 is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? I will entertain a motion.
There's got to be a faster way to do this. Whoops. Went too far. I've gone too far.
You betcha.
I move that Franklin County Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the six findings of fact and 12 conditions
It has been moved by Commissioner Low and seconded by Commissioner Harpster that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP 2022-7, SEPA 2022-23, with six adopted findings of fact and 12 conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
So, Mike Kraus?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Layton Low?
Yep.
Stacy Neifson?
Yes.
Yes. Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
Yes. And Peter Harpster?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Motion has been approved.
And this is a big deal. This is the first time Peter has ever voted on anything. I'm very excited. So, motion passes.
In his defense, it's not quite accurate.
Okay. Item two. Is a public hearing for file CUP 2022-8, SEPA 2022-24, is a proposal to allow for the construction of the Pasco Resource Recovery Center. The facility will be located adjacent to the city's water reuse facility and will be providing water treatment services, odor reduction, production of renewable natural gas from biogas, and nitrogen removal for industrial food processors in Pasco under a contract with the city of Pasco. I declare the public hearing for CUP 2022-8, SEPA 2022-24 to be open at 6:57. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned, this is a... Located at the city's water reuse facility, and at the 957 East Foster Wells... East 957 East Foster Wells Road. Parcel number 113090085. Zoning for the area is agricultural production 20 and agricultural comp plan designation. And the property size is approximately 82.49 acres. It's located east of Highway 395, north of Foster Wells Road, and west of Blaisdell Road. Of that 89, 85-acre site, approximately 28.6% of the western portion of the property is to be used or considered for this part of the conditional use permit. And it's to allow construction of the Pasco Resource Recovery Center. So, what is this? Well, what this is, because all of this gobbledygook here may not make much sense with absent with the... The concept is this, is to recapture biogases that are produced at the facility, convert those to natural gas, and then tap into the Williams Pipeline System, and then it becomes natural gas. That's, you know, for homes. It's a very technical and evolved process, but there are other existing examples of this. This is not the first time it's been done. It's actually been being done for quite a few years in different applications, dumps, various, any places that produce viable methane or gases that can be converted. So, the site plan provides, shows where the locating these ADI B8BF digesters, eight-foot chain link fence, access maintenance road, location of biogas flare blowers, covered EQ tank, parking and building access, control buildings, sequencing batch reactors, and location of existing city of Pasco facilities. Again, this is one of those where any technical or operational questions, we have folks from the city. The Public Works Director is here, and I think he's got others with him, right? Yep. And they're going to be much better to answer any technical questions than we are. So, that's the existing, and this is the portion where they're going to build this And that, I assume, is the pump house for the facility. But that's the existing facility, not the new one. Nothing's been built for that yet. This is what the actual build site looks like. On or about August 25th, 2022, staff sent notices to technical agencies, property owners within one mile of Franklin County Graphic posted a pending land use action sign on the property and entered the SEPA determination of nonsignificance into the SEPA registry as number 202204270. I just realized I keep saying that we do the numbering. We don't. We submit it. They provide that number. No public comments were received during the comment period. We did get some very late in the process that were in support, and those have been included in your packets. So, but we have nothing... We had a couple of calls, inquiries, and once we told them that it was going to potentially reduce the order, they went, "Okay." And that was the last... US Bureau of Reclamation again provided their standard kind of comments regarding, "Keep anything out of their stuff." But I don't think there's really any, much of anything around there. But Franklin County Works, standard comments regarding approach permit and utility extensions. Proposals for the creation of the Pasco Resource Recovery Center, which will be built adjacent to and complement the already existing Pasco Process Water Reuse Facility. And it'll replace the water treatment function of the PPWRF to capture natural gases produced at the facility and convert said gas to usable natural gas using two anaerobic digesters, two sequential batch reactors, a gas upgrade system, gas compressors, and a gas pipeline connection to an off-site interconnect natural gas facility. Main function of the facility are to reduce odors, produce renewable natural gas from biogas, and provide nitrogen removal for the industrial food processors. Staff recommends approval of the proposal based upon review of utility goals and policies contained within Franklin County Comprehensive Plan and review of the Franklin County Code. Based upon information provided by the applicant, the project will be a net benefit due to a reduction in greenhouse gases being released to the atmosphere, reduction in odor, and the production of renewable natural gas. Right now, the state is in the process of developing guidelines. We're having more direction to address, review, and try to mitigate climate change or greenhouse gases. They're in the process of developing how and what we're all going to have to do. So, generally though, it's expected that it will be a reduction program. So, wherever you are at whatever point in time they pick, then we will have a goal to try to reduce that. The... It is not expected to be something to where like Franklin County, which has relatively low, when compared to, say, city of Spokane, you know, it's not a that. It's going to be, each county's going to have their own baseline. That's kind of where they're leaning right now. So, this actually falls right into, that'll just help us get our numbers down too. So, that's another benefit. The proposed use in the AP 20 zoning district is in accordance with goals, policies, and county development regulations. Nobody's going to see this thing. I mean, they'll see stuff out there, but they won't know what it's for. They'll just assume it's an expansion of the existing plant, but it's actually going to be potentially reducing things, some of the conflicts or potential conflicts. Will not adversely affect public infrastructure. Will be constructed, maintained, and operated to be in harmony with the existing character. Location, height of the structure and site design will not discourage the development of permitted uses on property in the general vicinity or impair the value thereof. They're going to have to abide by the same standards for industrial lighting and everything than anybody else would. It will not be more objectionable nearby properties or to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibrations, dust traffic, or flashing lights than would be the operation, any uses permitted within the district. Will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare if located where proposed. In addition to the standard CUP language, best management practices for dust mitigation during construction shall be used. Vegetation to cover or attack a fire shall be provided as soon as practical following, clearing, and grading. Dust control shall comply with that as something, you know, that is a potential risk due to the location, the fact there's nothing really around it. The wind can get kicking good. However, this is a relatively developed site, and therefore, we are recommending regarding archaeological and historic items that it's inadvertent discovery protocol. Whether they want to go above and beyond that is up to them, but as far as our requirements, will be inadvertent discovery protocol. They will need to apply for Franklin County building permit. Now that said, a lot of that's going to be, that facility's going to require engineering and special inspections, but that will be coordinated between them and the building department to figure out what we're going to do and what they're going to need to do with regard to special inspections. And then, they'll need to comply with a modicum of state and federal regulations regarding this type of development. And those are going to be the folks that are making sure that they're doing primarily, you know, the operation, whether the operation design works, things like that. whether the operation design works, things like that. We will be seeking approval from those agencies, not critiquing necessarily the actual plans because this is, is high-end engineering here. And then comply with the requirements of Franklin County Public Works. And the suggested motion is as follows.
Does any commissioner have any questions of staff? Does the applicant or applicant's representative wish to speak?
Can you hear me? I'm Walker Dimig. I'm with Burnham SCV, the applicant. My address is 841 Oneida Street, Denver, Colorado. I want to thank the staff for going through this application. It's probably a little different than some of the ones that you all typically get, and thank you all for, for hearing it today. This project, it's part of the, a larger effort by the city to upgrade the PWRF facility out there. There are three phases. Public Works Director is here, he can, he can speak to the, the others, but Phase 1, 2, and 3, 1 is underway. 2 will be done in concert with this. We are Phase 3, our, our project. Phase 3 is all about upgrading the treatment capabilities at the PWRF. So right now, the PWRF does some mild pretreatment. Mostly it's a collection facility prior to land application on city-owned land of the processor wastewater in Pasco. The, and there's also winter storage capability there. This facility that we're building is really a, a full modern wastewater treatment plant. So it will include two anaerobic digesters, which is a first stage of treatment, very common treatment process for wastewater. Municipal plants use it, dairy farms can use it. Many large agricultural production facilities and processing facilities have anaerobic digesters to treat the wastewater. We also will have a secondary step for nitrogen removal. And both of these are accomplishing the goal of removing nutrients, stabilizing the wastewater, you know, reducing pathogens, reducing odor such that the wastewater that you then put onto the fields is cleaner, has less odor, is safer. So very common practices in the wastewater treatment industry, nothing groundbreaking there. We have added another element onto the project. When you do anaerobic digestion, it creates microbes in there, break down waste, it creates biogas. We're going to capture that biogas, you can convert that then into natural gas, it's mostly methane, and inject that into a pipeline and add to the, to the, the gas resource here in, in, in the community. We think it's a great project. It really will be an investment in the processors, the, the processors here in, in Pasco and in Franklin County. It's an investment in the agricultural producers who supply them, and, and so we're very excited about it. The last thing here is just that the, the facility, like I said, is right adjacent to the existing PWRF. Operations will be highly similar, equipment, infrastructure, all highly similar to what is out there. And I think the biggest thing is, is was previously pointed out is that this will reduce odors coming from the wastewater, which has been a complaint in the past from local residents, that, you know, anaerobic digesters are known odor mitigate, mitigation approaches. And so there will be less odor coming from the treatment of the wastewater from these processors. So I'll be available to answer any questions that anyone has at your convenience. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any in-person public testimony for the project?
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Steve Worley. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Pasco, and I'm here to support the recommendation for the conditional use permit. I don't know if most of you are aware of our Process Water Reuse Facility. We have a facility out there in the middle of nowhere, north of Foster Wells Road. We currently have six agricultural processors that send their wastewater to this facility. They do that through several different pump stations. Some are ours, some are theirs, and they pump it all the way from the Foster Wells area on the other side of 395 and all the way south on Capitol Avenue, and they pump their wastewater up to our facility. We screen it, and then we put it into ponds, which equalizes the flow to our irrigation pump station, which is the building that Derek showed earlier. And then it gets pumped out to 16 farm circles that we lease out to local growers, and they grow a crop on it that helps remove the nitrogen in the water, and then the water infiltrates into the ground. Right now, we use about one-third of the annual water for those crops comes from the reuse facility, and two-thirds of the water comes from the groundwater. This facility that we're looking at improving right now is to accommodate the growth of our food processors and to accommodate a new processor that is coming to Pasco. We have a, a representative of that new processor here tonight and who hopefully will speak as well. Dairy Gold is here, and so it's interesting to see some of the changes that we heard about earlier because I believe that's related to some of the stuff that Dairy Gold is doing and the dairy farmers in the area getting more cattle to get more milk, to get more stuff to Dairy Gold. And then Dairy Gold's wastewater is coming to this facility. That's one of the reasons, I think, that they picked Pasco as the location for their new plant. So we need to upgrade the facility, we need to increase the winter storage. The processors continue through the winter, but we cannot put the water on the fields during the winter because it's not the growing season. So we currently have 150 million gallons of winter storage ponds. Those are what you saw in the picture, they're big ponds. We're going to add 300 million gallons more on the north side of where this proposal is. And then when the water gets there, it's going to go through the system that Walker talked about. It's going to pretreat the wastewater. We are currently limited by our permit with ecology that we can only put so many hundreds of thousands of pounds of nitrogen on our fields. With the new water that's coming in from our existing processors and from Dairy Gold, we exceed that amount of nitrogen. Therefore, we have to remove the nitrogen before we can put the water on the fields. We can't remove the nitrogen until we get rid of the BOD. The BOD is the biochemical oxygen demand. The anaerobic digester that Walker was talking about is what removes the BOD, creates the methane, and then the water goes into the nitrogen removal process. And then we can take all the water that gets run up to the reuse facility and put it out on our fields. So it's basically recycling, and through the recycling process, it's creating a beneficial product. So we really encourage this project, we really recommend its approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you. Is there any more testimony for the project? Case?
Okay, so Hunter Mullen, 2760 Papier Road in Mesa, dairy farmer, and I am definitely in favor of this project. This is where the ag world is going to go to with digesters and reducing greenhouse gases. And this probably will not be the only facility like this in the county, so there'll probably be more coming. And with Dairy Gold coming, building the new plant, which is started, you know, we need to make sure we take care of everything and make it sustainable, long-term. So, all thumbs up.
Thank you. Any more in favor?
My name is Doug Peddinger. I'm the Senior Director of Environmental Affairs for Dairy Gold. My address is 3236 East Throw Up Red Lane in Boise, Idaho. And I have been working in the environmental field for 40-plus years, 22 of it in the dairy industry. And we are extremely excited about this project. We have never had the opportunity to have waste streams managed in this way with beneficial outcomes. It's something that we find extremely exciting, the fact that these gentlemen were able to bring this collaboration of food processors together, to work together with similar waste streams, to take waste to energy along with the crop production, groundwater protection, groundwater conservation. Some of our water is evaporated off the milk, it's very clean, it looks like a glass of water. It's, it's ideal for agricultural reuse. Then you take the organic strength of our waste streams and turn it into energy. It's just a win-win on multiple fronts, and we're very excited to, to see it happening. We think that Steve is probably going to have visitors from many parts of the country to take a look at this operation and see how it was put together and, and what it's going to be able to do. So we, we are in favor, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the project? Okay, anyone against or neutral? None? Any call-in public testimony? Any email testimony? Does staff have any final comments?
No.
Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? Public testimony portion of public hearing for CUP 2022-8, SEPA 2022-24 is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Franklin County Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the six findings of fact and 10 conditions of approval detailed in the staff report and approve case file CUP 2022-08, SEPA 2022-24.
It has been moved by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Gutierrez that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP 2022-8, SEPA 2022-24, with the six adopted findings of fact and 10 conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Corales?
Yes.
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Leighton Lo?
Yes.
Stacy Neiften?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
Peter Harpster?
Yes.
All right, a motion has been approved.
The motion is approved. Thank you.
City of Pasco, I'm going to do a little bragging on this.
Yeah.
I have nothing about this, this is a pretty cool deal. Just, I, I, we, we know about Dairy Gold, we know about all this stuff. You got your budget, might want to do a little bit of bragging.
Okay.
Well.
Do we have a call for public comment?
On what?
That's the whole purpose of public comment, we don't know.
Okay.
They're not allowed to talk about anything on the agenda.
Any member of the audience who wants to comment on the items not listed on the agenda? None?
Okay. I do have.
I have a comment. What does this facility look like in general?
So it's, I don't know if you saw the original, the picture he had up there. Basically, it's a bunch of in-ground, or two large in-ground ponds. They're called low-rate anaerobic digesters, so they're in-ground basins, 32 million gallons each. So each about a third the size of that big pond that you see existing there in the picture. So those two are the digesters. They'll have, they'll have a little bit of a berm on the edge, a little concrete apron, and then they have coverings. And then next to that will be a nitrogen removal system, just a concrete, basically concrete basins, control building, and then a gas cleanup skid. So very much typical oil and gas type equipment. So you take out hydrogen sulfide, you know, nitrogen, CO2 that may be in the biogas, pretty simple skid-mounted equipment on little concrete platforms, and then inject it into the pipeline. So that's a very small part of it. The, the big, if you look at it from an overhead, the dominating feature are these two large in-ground digesters. So you build them in ground, it's cheaper, and also they stay warmer that way, and you want to, you want to keep that environment warm because you have, basically it's a living environment that's doing a lot of work for you. You're using bacteria and microbes to, to, to convert things into methane for you.
So the only building is facilities, building type?
There's a control building, yeah. So there'll be a building, it'll have some lab equipment in it, and the, the staff will use it and, you know, have controls where they're monitoring, you know, pumps and blowers and various pieces of equipment. But that's the only sort of structure outside of the actual water treatment equipment.
Oh wow. Sounds good.
You'll remember in the presentation information that the nitrogen removal process that was described is called a SBR or a sequencing batch reactor. Basically, it's concrete ponds that go through several different iterations of converting nitrogen out of the water and releasing it into the air. And so we are considering or looking into a newer technology now to possibly do a algae removal process where it's inside of a greenhouse, and it'll be a series of belts that will rotate through the wastewater stream and from the nitrogen in the water to the carbon in the air, we'll grow an algae film on the belt, and that will remove the nitrogen from the water, remove carbon from the air. And then we can take the algae off of the belts and take it out, de-water it, add some fiber wood product to it, and turn it into fertilizer that can be used for commercial growers. And so we're looking at that as a potential option as well. So not only creating renewable natural gas, not only recycling the water, but also possibly turning it and grabbing the nitrogen in a way that we can turn it into a viable, marketable product as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay. Do we adjourn the meeting before we do our other thing?
No, no, this is just an update. So this, this will be under administrative items.
Okay.
So I'll be quick about that. So, beginning of the meeting, I handed you two things that say Actera on them. What these are, comprehensive plan amendment applications. Under state law, you can only amend your comp plan one time per year. So now, what that means is you can take one legislative action, basically the board, to actually physically change the comp plan. But that doesn't mean you're only going to make one change to it. You may make multiple changes depending on the subject, the year, what the county wants to do, what other folks on the outside want to do. Right now, we've got two, what we call public or, or from the public, applications, both for Actera, seeking a comprehensive plan and map amendment. What I would like to do is have a public hearing on the, and on what we call the docket. So I will put together a staff report and, and things like that, kind of summarizes these applications in a general sense, and then say, this is the docket. Then we make a recommendation to the board. That docket, if it's approved, or whatever version is approved, is then forwarded onto the board for final adoption. So they'll adopt the 2022 docket. Now, because of the future-wise appeal, we've got some things hanging in the wind out there. So there are actually maybe a third. Now, the appeal, if we're required to make any changes through the appeal, that doesn't count as our single amendment. But these properties are in the prop, the land that is under question by, so we're, we have the, you know, we. we have the, you know, we, we've never believed Franklin's crops were all TAC designation. All TAC is agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. Futurewise challenges on that, the Growth Management Hearings Board said, yeah, that is what we meant. And we've appealed that, we're waiting to get it to the appeals court, but there's been some glitches. And currently, we're under a moratorium, we passed a moratorium in an attempt to become compliant because the appeal was not going to hit before the compliance deadline. So, and that were, we had a hearing on that on September 15th as to whether that was qualified as being in compliance. We're waiting, we're in a final answer on that. So that should be coming any time now, it usually takes them about two weeks to get to a-
Can I clarify this for the new guys a little bit? Do you guys know what he's talking about? There's a chunk of ground out in the middle of nowhere that they think is super fancy and we can't do anything with. Do you guys know that? Ag land that can't be developed for some reason?
Well, it can be developed as ag land or open space. It has to be treated like that.
Thanks for that. So basically, yeah, the city's coming along and there's this piece of ground that can't be developed because it was designated as super farm ground, I don't know by who or when, and I didn't even know about this appeal.
Well, we appealed the Growth Management Hearing Board.
Yeah.
So they, they came and said, oh, well, these were all TACs. No, they weren't all TACs, they were never intended as all TACs, they were planning designators used by the planning staff to determine, okay, when you're looking at land for annexation or UGA expansions, there's a checklist, you know, urbanized land, that's the first thing you want. And then you kind of go down through these, you know, things. The last thing, and in fact, the last thing you ever want to do is convert all TACs, which are, well, in our cases, there's three types. You've got mineral lands of, of resource lands, so that's mining, you've got forestry, we don't have forests, and then you have ag. Those are the three. There's, some people might think shorelines of water, but that's, that's neither here nor there right now. So for planning purposes, we have, we have designated, that's urban land. Well, we also had this land that we recognized was used for commercial agriculture and we called it Franklin crops or Franklin soils, you'll see both. And what we intended when we did that was that, that's secondaries. So you only move into that land if you don't have urbanized land to move into. And you can tell this by various things. One, it's one mile from the city to the edge.
So where's this property at?
Well, soil doesn't naturally grow one mile in a band along the border.
I have farmed this ground, it is the same as everything around it.
Most of the city of Pasco-
You're the super farm-
None, it's actually-
No, actually, no.
Subpar farm ground.
So-
It's nuts.
So where's this property at?
So it's, it's, it's the county.
It's right outside-
No, no, what, what, I'm telling you, it's literally the county, all the county. Now, we get into north-
Trying to stop development.
Remember when, well, I can't speak to them.
It dodged around this property.
No, and, and the, what, no, it, it dodged around the actual designated all TACs.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yes.
So they're dodging this piece of property.
So the county looked, looked at the, the border that was proposed by the City of Pasco for their UGA expansion and we realized that pro, there was a, a chunk of a circle that was a designated all TAC. So we pulled that out and that was about seven acres. And then there's some other land that because of airport and other restrictions, it could never reach an urban density, so we, we pulled that out of the UGA too. Because if you include it in the UGA, you shouldn't be limiting its ability to reach urban levels. So, yeah, we got challenged on that and we've been fighting that since June of 21.
So they're just trying to stop development, just like they've always promised to do?
No, they're claiming it's because we did not do the proper SEPA and we didn't properly de-designate the land. We're contending that we didn't de-designate the land because there was no legal requirement to de-designate the land because it was never an all TAC.
Technically, their goal is to stop development.
But we are in the process of fixing this, Greg.
We're in the process of going through the process to see if we can get it fixed. So we've appealed it to the Growth, or, we appealed it to, we skipped Superior Court just so that we can expedite it and we went straight to the appeals court. However, because we don't have some of the things that we need, we're still waiting for the appeals court.
Where this property is, the city will come up to it, it will have to start to go around this piece of property. It's ridiculous.
Right here, large division right here?
Well, if, if we're ruled-
That's where a new school is born, that's getting built out of the sand, this right here, but everything around it.
It's, it's just wild, it's wild.
It's just, it's, it's-
What Futurewise does.
It's, it's what, this is the nature of planning.
Okay.
These things happen. So we're working through it.
Which one is that, what page is that?
But we'll, but these, but, but in the interim, we got to get this docket, we got to get it, and my hope is to hold the hearing for these two items, these, or to get them onto the docket and have the board approve the docket pending, and then that counts as a 2022 change even if we don't adopt it until 2023.
Okay, okay.
And so.
Yeah.
And that's all I'm going to say on that.
So what's best-case scenario on this? I mean, is this a, a one-year project or a 10-year project? Getting this done?
You talking about the appeal?
Wiping out the no-man's land.
I don't understand.
We don't want a bubble in the middle of our city, how, what's the chances of getting this done?
Oh, it'll get fixed.
It will get fixed.
Oh, one way or the other.
Okay. But is it 10 years or is it a couple of years?
Well, okay, it, it's relying on the courts, I don't control the schedule. One of these I was involved in took five years.
But it went. It happened.
And then we ended up with a split decision, so.
There's compromises that will be made.
Maybe.
I don't get it.
No, it's wild, it's wild.
I don't understand the basis.
We've been dealing with this one since I've been on this board. This came up right when I first came on here.
Started in 18.
Yeah.
All of that UGA deal.
Yeah, yeah. And on this one, they just skirted around it.
Why?
Because of that designation.
Well, the same organization is the ones that stopped all well-drilling in the state of Pasco.
That's Futurewise?
Yep. And they sued Benton County almost over the same-
See, they're new down here.
I don't know if they're interested in locking up a piece of ground like-
Their whole interest is to stop development out in farm ground and intensify high density with the city.
Oh, really, okay.
Okay, the planning commission is adjourned at 7:36.